We'll be talking about the 50-year plan. I went to Scappoo's High School. Sometimes my... I've got Scappoo's English skill. I grew up here. For MIT, APG, and Johnson Economics, CJ Doxy will be talking about the Housing Needs Analysis. After these presentations, we'll be moving to the cafeteria for a community visioning activity. But why don't we start from where we were? It's interesting. I was 30 years old when I was first elected to the Scappoo City Council. In 1998, I was elected. I was sworn in in 1999, approximately 25 years ago. And gray hair comes with the job, apparently. Either that or it's age, because I was a young kid on a city council with people my age now. So it's an interesting look at that. But where were we back then? There were essentially no parks in the city of Scappoo's. There was Heritage Park with the gazebo. The grass was brown. It died during the summer because it was an old roadbed, and the skate park had just been built. As I recall, a school board member actually said, "The schools are the city's parks," at that time. And the city vowed to change that. There was no Miller Park. There was no Veterans Park. There was no... The Crown-Z Trail was closed by logging gates. We did not own Chapin Landing. Tur-Trek Trailhead did not exist. There was no CZ Road or Havill Drive. The largest business in town was the Seinfeld Sourcrown, which was a few years from closing. The largest business in town... There was no Cascade Tissue, no Oregon Manufacturing Innovation Center, the R&amp;D, or the training, which is a PCC campus. The school buildings in town were not new or improved. The newest school building 25 years ago was still the high school, which was standing in this as an improved portion of it. But that was the last building built at that point, which was in the '70s. The East Airport was not in the UGV. East Side Downtown did not exist. It was vacant at the time. There was no theater, and there were 13 members of the city staff. Today, the population is 8,010 people, a growth of 70%. We've been discovered, by the way. I personally blame Instagram, Facebook, for taking pictures of this beautiful place that we live in and letting other people know about it. We have nine parks or park properties, direct access to the ZZ Trail from our own Trail Tech trailhead. Five of our parks are improved. Several are waiting for us to find the funding, the granting, and the planning to improve them. But we have the property to design and develop a very good park system. The skate park has been rebuilt and greatly improved, along with receiving an amazing paint job by a high school student this last couple of years. I think it was last summer, right before the 100-year celebration. Heritage Park has seen many improvements, including the fountain, the library building... Well, the library building was already there. Upgrades to the gazebo, murals on the library, watchhouse improvements, a playground on that park so kids and families can come and play and enjoy the park. City Hall received an art installation, the Sphere, in 2021. The school district has rehabilitated the high school and several other buildings and built a new school across the way. And just recently, the school raised the money from the community in incredible time for a new turf build on the football field, which should expand opportunities, hopefully with the school district. We need to pressure them to get other activities once it's terved so that we can expand opportunity. But that was an amazing feat by the school district. CZ Road was constructed to create opportunities for the East Airport subdivision, which helped bring in PCC, OMIC, and Cascade Tissue. Havill Drive was built. And that was built during the last great... The Great Recession, after the Great Recession with monies from the federal government to fix that railroad crossing so that traffic could pass through it. And what came because of that investment from the federal government? You've got Bymark, you've got Flotons, you've got Goodwill, and you're getting some AD-some-out apartments. And most importantly to me is that the city preserved the candle and will be rehabbing it in the next couple of months so that it's returned to its former glory and maintains an asset for the city. I always saw the candle when I was a kid in the back of my parents' car coming home. You saw the candle, you knew you were home. And that's always what I remember about the candle. East Side Downtown was built up. I think the main developer is somewhere in the audience. But really, we didn't have that. We didn't have this nice little downtown that's been developed on the east side of town. And that's created a little vibrancy in that area, including for the park. One of the things you're going to see in the next couple of months is electric vehicle charging stations that are being placed near the library. And the Tesla ones are very special because they're their newest high-speed charging systems. And they'll be on a map in every Tesla saying, "Here's a spot where you can go charge." So Cathedral Coffee should be very happy. And today, there's more than 30 staff members between the police department, our planning, our public works, taking care of all these things. When the city grows up and you have people moving in, there's an expectation of services that was provided in the communities they came from. And one of the things for the city that we've had to do is work on providing those expectations. We did ask you all right before COVID hit to approve a $0.3 gas tax on gas within the community, which was voted in. And I think the first major project that you're seeing is the sidewalks going in on Old Portland Road, which is creating a corridor for kids who walk to school from those new developments back there that's safe and on sidewalks. So we're really excited about being able to do those projects. And it's the one thing I always say, "I'm going to ask you for a tax. I'm going to make sure that you know what we're going to spend the money on and that we spend the money on that." It's not going to just go and vanish somewhere else because that's your hard-earned money that we're spending. Now, I drive Uber, Lyft. I fill up every day. I make sure I fill up in Scappoo. So I'm paying a lot of that tax, and I don't mind because I know where it's going. So today's conversation will inform the creation of a 50-year plan, knowing where we've been, where we are today, where are we going to go in the future. A document that will help guide the city as it develops with input of the community groups and stakeholders, the input of the community and the technical expertise of staff and consultants. The plan will set the stage for the future of the city. And so with that, we're putting it into your hands as to help us design that future. And that's why we decided to have this as our annual town hall meeting this year. So I'm not sure who's the next speaker. Why don't we just introduce Beth? Goodman?
What are we doing here? We're doing a 50-year plan. And you might say to yourself, "50 years? How can we possibly plan for 50 years? How are we going to get everything right?" And I'll just start off by saying, "We're not going to get everything right, but we're going to set up so that you have the right policies and right planning of area and right area for the city to grow in so that as there's different opportunities that come to the community over the next 50 years, you can take advantage of those." So as a planner, I often think about things like, "Where are we going to put roads? Where are we going to have water and wastewater?" Without doing this 50-year planning, you only know for the next few years. So this sets up a framework for the city to think about, "Where are all those things going to go?" It sets up for partnering with the school district to think about where a school's going to be in the future, where a park's going to be, all these things that you care about and that make your community special. So we're doing this plan to understand how Scappoo's may grow over the next 50 years and to make informed decisions about that growth that is grounded in your community vision, which NIECE is going to talk about in a few minutes. And then we like, as planners, to talk about policies and implementation of the policies. But essentially, setting up the right ideas so that as different opportunities come to the city, the city can capitalize on them. And as the city has... The community has good ideas. There's a framework in which to grow those good ideas. So looking at opportunities for growth of employment, different types of housing, other land needs, other things that we can't even conceive of now. I mean, who 20 or 30 years ago would have conceived of carrying something that's more powerful than the computer that took care of the space shuttle in their pocket? So what are we going to have in the next 30 years? I have to confess, I don't know. We'll be talking to some people who have better ideas about the future, some futurists essentially, a little bit. Or we may be doing that through the project and saying, "Okay, how does that have to connect with the built environment, with the things that you have here in Scappoo's? So your roads and your sidewalks and your parks and your housing? How are we going to need to provide flexibility or to start building in that flexibility over the next 50 years?" And then also things like integrating recent legislative changes into your zoning code. So things that land use geeks care about and that planners care about, but maybe you guys, a little less interesting for you. So the parts of the 50-year plan, overarching all of this, is the community vision. We're engaged in doing that right now. Here is part of the community outreach to establish the vision. NIECE will be talking about that a lot more. And then looking at your growth, your opportunities for growth. So for employment, CJ and Brendan are going to be talking about growth for housing, growth of things like parks and other types of land uses. So schools, that kind of thing. We'll be planning for those. And then you've got this really geeky thing called an urban growth boundary. It's the thing that is all around the city that determines where you'll be growing over the next 20 years. And then we can establish areas for growing over the next 50 years. And where those areas of growth are will help the city plan for how it's going to provide services eventually to those more outlying areas that in 50 years, Scappoo's will look different because of. We've also got your comprehensive plan. This is part of the update. That's the plan that guides your... It's the essentially visionary plan for guiding your land use. So why do we have housing over here? And why do we allow this kind of housing here but not that kind of housing? Why do we allow these kinds of employments in this area but not in that area? So your comprehensive plan will be updating with the policies based on both the work we're doing or the work that CJ and Brendan are doing for housing and then also for economic development and other types of public uses. All of those together will be put into the Scappoo's 50-year plan. We intend for that to be a short summary of the very long, very geeky, and for some people, very boring technical processes that will come out of this, the technical reports. This is all informed by your stakeholder groups, your advisory committee, your decision makers, your city council, your planning commission, and then all of you. Here we've got a project schedule. We are anticipating working on this project through 2024. And there's different pieces of this that will be going on. Right now, we're really engaged with the community visioning. And we'll be starting up on the 50-year growth opportunity work here in the next few months. We'll have stakeholder advisory committees, some open houses throughout all the different phases of the project. So this is my favorite part. A successful project has to be created with a shared sense of ownership among the community. So we could do an okay job of this if we weren't here talking to you guys. You'd probably sit on the shelf and maybe be used a little bit. That's not what we're doing. We're talking to you. We're getting your ideas. We're going to incorporate your ideas. And you'll see them in different parts of this plan. So we really need all of you. We really need our stakeholder advisory committee. I'm not sure if anybody's here from the stakeholder advisory committee. If you want to raise your hand up, if you are. Thank you all for participating in that, certainly. They're going to do a lot of hard work with us. And this will be a much better plan because we have all of this input. So I'm going to hand it over to NIECE to talk about the vision.
Thank you, Beth. Okay. So as Beth mentioned, this is a pretty long project. Many years, almost three years of work ahead of us. And we just kicked this off. So we are in the beginning phases of the Scappoo's 50-year plan process. And the first phase, as Beth mentioned, is developing our 50-year community vision. So I'm just going to walk through a little bit about what that means for you, what's happening in the next couple of months, what we're going to be doing later after this presentation, and giving you a bit of the lay of the land of the next six months. So we are really focused in this phase of work on creating opportunities for discussion, for knowledge sharing, and also problem-solving with all of you and the greater Scappoo's community. This vision that's going to come out of this first phase of work will help guide the technical analysis that is going to be coming out of this work. So Beth mentioned there's some technical work coming out of the 50-year plan that includes a housing needs analysis, an economic opportunities analysis, among some other types of work. All very geeky stuff, but certainly available for everyone to review and learn from. And all of that will be done kind of alongside the development of this 50-year vision. And that vision will be really important for providing input about values and preferences in the city of Scappoo's that is well-supported by the data that exhibits trends and forecasts as well. So we're really trying to marry your values and your preferences and your priorities with also the trends and the forecasts that we should be expecting over the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years. So as we're developing this vision, we're really focused on engaging the community through a variety of different activities and events and outreach opportunities. And then all of these activities are really designed to understand these desires and these preferences and your priorities for the future. All of these values will be synthesized into some key themes that will constitute the vision statement for the 50-year plan. We always like to ask ourselves these questions on the bottom right. "Where are we now? Where are we going? Where do we want to be? And how do we get there?" So in the next six months, where else will we be? So we are all here gathered today, this morning, to hear this presentation. And then hopefully, all of you will stay for a workshop activity in the cafeteria. But there's a lot of other things going on in the community over the next six months related to this project. We are launching community conversations, which you will find so much information about on the project website. We've got an online survey going. We have a photo contest going. We'll have some booths at the farmer's market when it starts getting warm out. And of course, we have today's workshop at the annual town meeting. So you may or may not have seen the logo for this project or a newsletter clipping about this work. But it's really exciting. We just kicked it off. And there's a lot of information out there and a lot of opportunities to get involved and share your ideas for the future. So I will leave this up on the screen, but don't worry. There's... All of these links are also in your meeting packets. There's a lot of pages there. So feel free to, when you get home or later this afternoon, take a look at the city's website, take a look at the project website. A lot of information about all of those events and activities that I just mentioned. And then, of course, as we've all mentioned, there's a number of really spectacular staff, city staff that are working on this project. So we have Isaac Butman, who is essentially our key spokesperson for this work. And he is extremely happy to answer any questions, field conversations, et cetera, about this work and more at the city. So keep that in mind. And right now, I'm going to pass it off to... Oh. Pass it off to Beth. So Mr. Mayor wants to come up and mention something that he forgot to talk about before we talk about the Housing Needs Analysis. Mr. Mayor?
I forgot the most important people in the room that are here that helped design and look over the city. And I want to start by apologizing to each and every one of them. But why don't they stand up as I announce their name? Council President Megan Ryson. Councilor Josh Holley. Councilor Ty Miller. Councilor Brandon Wasowski. Councilor Pete McHugh. And I'm looking for our newest council that we just appointed to replace Joel Hough, who is not here, but it is Councilor Jeanette Santiago. And she's been a long-term... She's been chair of our budget committee. She was on the planning commission, very active in the community. And we're very happy to welcome her on board, even though she decided not to come. Without them, the city goes nowhere. So it's greatly appreciated for all the work that they do for the city. Thank you all.
Testing. All right. Can everyone hear? Just a minute. A little louder. Can do. Here we are.
There we go.
Good morning, everybody. CJ Doxy with MIT Planning. I'm joined by Brandon Buckley with Johnson Economics. And we're going to take a few minutes to share some information about the Housing Needs Analysis. This is one of the geeky things that you've been forewarned about. So buckle up, and here we are. So basically, what we are doing here is taking a look at what the housing situation is like in the city of Scappoo's and what the housing situation might look like 20 years from now. And we're kicked off the project a few months ago. We've done a number of technical analysis to get us to this point here. We presented information to the stakeholder advisory committee last week, or excuse me, this week. And we'll continue to have conversations to guide our next steps, which is to try and have some good policy discussions and figure out what sort of solutions are going to be the best fit for the city of Scappoo's. So we're going to talk to you about those first two boxes. The left there, the Housing Needs Projection and the Buildable Lands Inventory. They're a pretty wonky group of data sets that have some numbers and graphs and charts to them. And then we'll have another opportunity probably about a year from now... Not quite a year from now. Towards the end of the year, we'll have another opportunity to bring some more information back to you where we'll have some questions on how we're going to fix or put together some tools in the toolbox that will allow the city to grow in a responsible and sensible way over time. So with that, I'm going to hand this off to Brandon, and he's going to talk about the Housing Needs Analysis.
Thank you. So my name again is Brendan Buckley and with Johnson Economics. We're partnering with MIT for this project. There's, as he alluded to, there's kind of a couple of major parts. One is looking at the demand for housing going forward. And the other is looking at the supply. And then as we go forward, we'll obviously be comparing the two and coming up with some conclusions about your housing lands. So why do cities do these studies? Beth covered sort of very well what the idea behind the 50-year planning effort. Kudos to your city for undertaking that. It's a bold planning process to undergo. So this part of it looks at housing in particular. It doesn't look at your employment lands or your employment zones. So not commercial, not industrial, but your residential zones and the nature of your current housing and what we think your future housing might be like. So the last point here is kind of important because this actually fulfills a specific need also under the state planning rules about comp planning. And so one important thing to point out here is that, just to complicate things right off the bat, these studies, the way they're set up following the rules, they don't look at 50 years. They look at 20 years. So what I'm going to be talking about is forecasts for the next 20 years of your housing need. Through this process, we're going to work closely with the city to make sure this feeds well into the 50-year planning effort and is very useful for that. But when you look at this, think of this in terms of... This will be the first 20 years of that 50-year planning effort. And like I said, we'll try to make it as useful as possible. I am going to be presenting some kind of numbers and figures. I'm not going to get too bogged down on it. I want to keep things moving along. All of this is in a draft report called the Housing Needs Analysis Report that's available through the city website and so on. But I just want to hit some key numbers. What you see here on the left-hand table are numbers from the Census. The first thing you'll see So in 2020, the U.S. Census found that the Scapoose city limits population was just a little over 8,000. This process looks at your entire urban growth boundary, which includes an area outside of your official city limits, and that's the area that the community might grow into in the future, and that's within what's called the urban growth boundary. So for this process, we need to look at that whole area, so there are a few extra estimated, a few hundred extra residents that live outside of your current city limits but inside your urban growth boundary, and they haven't been annexed yet or if they will be. So what we've done is look at the census numbers, and we do our best to try to estimate from those what the current or sort of baseline projection will be. We're using next year, 2023, to be a baseline year to match with the 50-year planning process. And then we project forward to what your future growth might be over the next 20 years. So we project growth of close to 2,000 new residents by 2043, close to 1,000 new households, and the need for over 1,000 new housing units to house those. We use a forecasted growth rate from Portland State University. They forecast a rate of growth of 1.3% over that period. Your community has actually grown faster than that over the last decade, so this would represent moderation of growth. And we look at a couple alternatives, which I'll talk about in a minute. Your share of family households hasn't changed much at 69%. That's pretty close to the county average and the state average. But we do find that we have very low housing vacancy in Scapoose at the moment of just a little over 3%. And so what you'd expect with such low vacancy is a lot of tightness in the housing market for both buyers and renters and rising prices, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with those trends. One major thing to consider, and we find this in a lot of communities, is there's a lot of cross commuting between residents of a place and where they work and also who works here. And so what this graphic shows is in the middle, a number of folks who both live and work in Scapoose, and then estimates of how many local residents are commuting out of the community for their primary job with the blue arrow, and then how many of your local workforce are commuting in from elsewhere. These numbers, they look deceptively exact, but these are actually, represent one category of employment called covered employment. It is mostly, it does include most employment, but it's not exact, so please just take these as sort of order of magnitude type numbers. But the important thing to think of here is when you're looking at your future housing needs, your current housing needs, how is it serving your current workforce? How might it serve your future workforce? And are there policy changes or things you want to look at there to perhaps change this balance at all and provide more workforce housing? Scapoose housing conditions, so your community is about 70% owner occupied housing, 30% renters. Most ownership houses are three or more bedrooms, so they're larger. 61% of your rental units are two or fewer bedrooms, but that does mean that 40% of your rental stock is three or more bedrooms, which is actually pretty good, and so that probably includes a lot of single-family homes and things for rent as well. On the right-hand side, you see a breakdown of the unit types for owners and renters. So ownership housing is almost all either single-family detached housing or manufactured homes, and rental units are a broader mix of all the different housing types. This is a measure of affordability, which is an important metric that we look at in these studies. So a commonly used measure of affordability is whether or not households are spending more than 30% of their income on their housing costs. That includes their mortgage or their rent, but it also includes things like insurance, utilities, and all the aspects of housing costs. And as you would expect, as you look further down the income spectrum on the bottom axis here, that the lower income folks have, the more likely they are to be paying more than 30% of their income on housing and be what we call, you know, housing cost burden or rent burden. So it's an important thing to remember that even though, even some of your folks who are in housing right now may be feeling a real crunch with the cost of the housing that they're in, and the lower you get down the income spectrum, the more precarious that can get. Finally, this is a breakdown, going back to my first slide. We said that our projection is the community would need a little over 1,000 new housing units over the 20-year period. This is a breakdown of our projection of what those units might be. You still see that well over half would be single-family homes or manufactured homes, which are also a form of detached housing. But then you see a broader mix of other unit types also needed, especially to meet the needs of your renter pool. And some of you may know there are new state rules about allowing certain types of duplexes and triplexes and so on in low-density zones. Those kick in when the community reaches a population of 10,000, which Scapoose should expect to do over this 20-year period. So that's another thing that you'll have on your horizon, and you don't need to deal with that just yet. Finally, we did look at some additional growth rates because using that Portland State number, again, that rate was lower than what the community has actually experienced over the last 10 years. And so just for informational purposes and planning purposes, we've included a couple of alternate rates to show what it would look like if that rate does tend to be higher. For the needs of this official report, we need to use the PSU number, but we want to provide maybe a little additional information for planning purposes in case that rate ends up being higher. So that's the demand side of the housing projections, and CJ will talk about the supply side.
All right, thank you. Hello again. The supply side is a pretty technical exercise called a buildable land inventory, or BLI for short, and it's a process of starting with a giant chunk of wood and whittling your way down to a point where it represents as best as we can estimate what your potential capacity for development is. And I kind of think of it as like a jar of sorts or a bucket, how big is your bucket in terms of holding households or ability to grow with new households over time. And this graphic here gives you an idea of the process of starting from where we're at and where we wind up at the top. What we do is we look at all the land in the UGV, the UGV being that kind of larger area that the city of Scapoose is required to plan for over a 20-year plan. And then we remove anything related to institutional or industrial uses and make me focus on just residential lands, housing needs analysis being our focus here. That includes both your residential lands as well as your commercial zones as well. Your commercial zones do allow residential uses in them. And then we go through another step where we remove environmental constraints. Environmental constraints are natural features that you shouldn't build on or are too difficult to build on, and those include floodplains, steep slopes, wetlands, those sort of things, and we remove those from those inventory. And then we look at what remains in terms of potentially buildable areas and try and, we go through a process of deducting, for larger parcels anyway, an amount of land for public utilities or streets, some of those bigger properties that will develop over the next 20 years, will need streets to service them, and we account for that as well. And what we wind up with is a net buildable acre number, and that's as far as we've gotten and as far as we will get as far as this land inventory goes. But there are a number of things that will potentially further constrain the supply, and we recognize that moving forward, and those include infrastructure constraints, people's willingness to sell the land for development, and other market drivers in terms of can it be built on, does it pencil out? And those are things that when we get to, towards the end of this project, those are some of those topic areas that we'll look in terms of identifying strategies for overcoming some of those barriers and opening up land supply that may be a little more difficult to reach right now. The next few slides will go through a series of maps that we go through here. This slide here identifies the constraints that we have. You can see that there are a number of wetlands, floodplains, landslide areas, landslide hazardous areas here that constrain the supply within Scapoose, so we recognize that we don't want housing built there if we don't have to. Then we go through a process of, again, identifying that land for residential. This again includes your residential and commercial zones there. And then we give it a development status based off of whether it's vacant, partially vacant, or developed. Vacant land being it's a greenfield, it's easy to put a house on there, especially if there's public services provided to it. Partially vacant includes those larger lots that may have a single-family home on it but have the potential to add more homes on an undeveloped portion of it. And then everything else kind of falls in that developed category. And what we get is a development capacity where we can see on the chart there what your potential development capacity is over time. Based off of our estimates, the city of Scapoose has a buildable capacity of somewhere a little over 1,200 units over the next 20 years. Most of that is in the suburban residential area, most of that is outside of your city limits and your urban growth area, those kind of low-density areas where the city could potentially expand, and those areas can be developed. But we're also finding there's quite a number of commercial areas, particularly your expanded commercial zones, that have a potential for capacity, and we've been hearing from city staff that that has been used as a source for residential land. But then we're also finding that there's probably a pretty low supply of multifamily zones. Maybe that's why we're seeing more development in the commercial as opposed to your multifamily zones. So with that, I think we'll take this information in towards the next steps, and we'll take Brandon's information and the information that we produced here and compare it or mash it together in terms of determining, does your needs match the supply, and if not, what are some of the solutions? And that's where we'll come back at a later point in time. But this is really just to give you a snapshot of the picture right now.